Good, the definition.
No, 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 let's, because we need to move on five.
We're on five.
Oh, oh, you want, okay, all right, well. Okay, uh, s- page twenty-two, section fi- uh, section five and, well, that's accessory use, uh, yeah.
Page twenty-two, sir?
Section five, page twenty-two. Let me go back there and see if I can get it.
Solid waste containers and mechanical equipment?
Yes, sir, there you go. Okay, it says there, uh, I'm gonna read off my notes, no solid waste container should be screened on, uh, all solid waste containers should be screened on three sides and must have, uh, that block the container from public view, uh, and then, and you have, may have an opaque gate, I say must have an opaque gate. It's ridiculous, you, you, you go by some of these, uh, and you see the darn, no gates up there and you see the garbage flowing out, they should have a gate on it.
All right, so we could change ma- made a must.
No, they should have opaque gate, huh?
Yes, opaque, yeah.
Yeah.
It shall be.
They must have, and cha- cha- change it.
Shall be used.
We're in A?
We're in A.
So, the, the trash reci- ha- trash handling area.
It'll be the second full sentence where it says an opaque gate may be used.
On the fourth side?
Yeah.
So, must be used on the fourth side?
And, and then, uh, I, I think, Commissioner Ichik, I think last time when we had that sitting, I, maybe it was you.
He said, oh, an opaque gate may be used on four, on the fourth side, and you should say it must be used.
Yeah. And, and I think we also discussed, you know, we're moving that, it, that should be approved by the DRC, that just for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, did you see that?
Uh, right before that, you know, in, uh, abiding properties or as approved by the DRC, I think, you know, we didn't want.
Delete that whole, as approved by the DRC.
Yeah. Yeah, cause that's in for, oh.
All right, so what are we changing now? We got the, we changed the made a must, what else are we doing?
Screen and close. Mm-hmm.
What, what else do you?
So, you're removing or is approved by the DRC?
Or as approved.
By the DRC, yeah.
And must be approved by the what?
Yeah.
Removing or as approved by the DRC.
Yeah, so just delete it, like, it should be two sides, you know, yeah.
And you want it to read, all solid waste container recycling or trash handling areas are permitted as accessory uses and shall be screened on three sides by a fence or wall from view from public streets and abutting properties.
Period.
Period.
No, in accordance with applicable regulations.
You want to leave that in accord, okay.
I would leave that.
Okay.
And, and just strike or as approved by the development re- review committee.
Exactly.
And the remaining sentence, in accordance with applicable regulations remain.
Yeah.
Right.
On the second sentence, it's an opaque gate must or shall be.
Shall be. Shall be.
So, you're changing must to shall be?
You may, yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Whether they wanna put a fence or wall.
Shall, it, it would just be the word shall, may to shall.
I think.
No may, they, they, they have to have a gate.
Whether they want a fence or wall.
Must.
Shall.
Must.
Must.
Shall be used.
Must.
Must and shall, I mean, we're getting in, uh.
It's, what i- what di- what, what is your preference?
Must.
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 Okay.
Okay, I, I move the item?
Must probably means shall.
Must and shall, I mean, rules of construction.
It does.
I, I.
Exactly.
All right, Mike moves the item, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
There's no, there's no more.
Okay, on page forty-three, number five, new buildings, um, okay, you with me?
Okay.
Yeah, forty-three, number five.
Okay, it says, new, new, new building shall be oriented so as to face a public street or public open space.
Right.
My, my question is, why must the building face the street? If it's in a shopping center or a PUD, can it, can it not face in another direction such as that Publix on one hundred and twenty-seventh Street? Why do we have to limit ourselves just to facing the public right of way?
Well, it says or public open space.
And it's designed to face the open space back there.
Will that, will that cover that?
What about, what about private open space?
Yeah.
Huh?
What's the definition of public open space?
I mean, it's accessi- I mean, it's accessible to the public, but private, I mean, then closed, you know, it's restricted.
It's restricted like a s-
Will the next planner say the same thing?
Yep.
Where are we at, counselor?
I guess his question is whether, whether or not, Mr. Held, is the language appropriate enough so that the Publix is being built right now?
I mean, we, we did a song and a dance with this Publix over there and that was a disgrace.
Yes.
It has access.
Just remember, this is applied only to non-residential commercial development, so it.
And I just said the, the.
It, it, it's going to always be public, so that's why we said public open space.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's a, excepts may be permitted by conditional use permit.
Say that again, Gary?
Excepts may be permitted by conditional use permit.
Why would you get, why would you give that exemption?
Okay.
As a designer, I would tell you that I have come across, I had one, in one community I was in, and I was the planner at the time, uh, my council person said, wh- why did we allow that building, um, that faces the back? The back of the building actually faces the frontage of the street, cause you didn't have anything in the code that says otherwise.
I withdraw.
Hmm.
And so, I have, over time, as a designer, made sure that these kind of things are clearly spelled out, so you don't end up looking at the,
So, so sector issue.
The back of the building.
You don't, it, it, you don't end up looking at the back of the building, but it also recognizes that buildings are gonna be on a property and the road's over here, and the orientation of the building needs to face some sort of public open space.
Don't wa-
So, the, the ambiguity in the sentence is that you use the word public twice, and in one sense, public street, public means o- owned or held by the public, and in the second one, public open space means just, uh, accessible to the public.
Correct.
It, so it's slightly ambiguous.
See, we don't wanna create a situation where the Publix is gonna be in violation before they ever have the ribbon cutting, you know, this, this is not gonna work.
Cause it's back end is to a, a major street, or.
Yeah, it's, it's blocked, it's, it's, with, with a wall.
And it was designed to face the, the student patio open space for, for Johnson and Wales.
Then it's not going, that would be this, that would be the public open space.
We would hope.
I mean, we did a song and a dance with this, we had a lot of people screaming, oh, we don't want that to fa- why is it facing? I mean, I, I, I wanna make sure that, when, when we have a developer come in, he wants to put a nice shop, or they wanna push, they wanna put a nice shopping center in,
I'm not doing this for the project.
and they don't wanna face Biscayne Boulevard, or they don't wanna face this or that street, that we're not gonna be doing a song and a dance with these people.
Well, you also wanna make sure you're getting attractive development that.
Right.
Does not, you don't see the loading docks, like this one particular building in the back of the building, that faces your major corridor.
Exactly, so then why we put it in there, well, the, the, the front of, the, we're, we're, here, we're saying the new building shall be oriented as to face a public open street, then we can always put a caveat in there that the service entrance and all that stuff has to be blocked from the public view, or the back of it has to be blocked from the public view.
Well, you wouldn't have to say that if you just said, if you left the second piece of that or the open space.
Yeah, okay.
Because then it's going to face, appropriately face the open space.
I have to ask our ward attorney, is, is that good?
It's not bad.
I, 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 I know it's a court.
But it's challengeable.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, if we get into a word, it's challengeable.
You know.
I would just say it different, I would say to face a public street or open space accessible to the public, something like that.
Okay, how, can we add that, with that?
Or open space accessible.
Or open space accessible to the public seems to work fine.
Okay, let's put that in there, oh, go ahead, Mike, make that motion.
All right.
All right, move the item.
And, and, and then, if we're gonna say that, may I add active open space?
No. Okay, active, why does it have to be active?
I mean, uh, cause if you, if you pay one of, of face or passive opens, it's just like, you know, it's grass, you know, it just open, then there's no activity really, then that diffuses purpose.
That, that, that's, that, I think that's kind of like.
No, but that's important, it's, 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 it's important.
Well, I don't have a problem, it seems like, it, it.
It's im- it's important.
Maybe a challenge.
Yeah.
Well, it, it could, it could potentially, then you're looking at, then you end up with the same situation where you have, whatever's facing is going to be to the public, that the public sees is that, back of that loading dock. So, it's a design parameter, and I think that might be a critical piece of what, you know, what you just said, Nixon.
Put, put it in, you accept the amendment?
Yeah. Okay.
I second.
All right, Mike, uh, has the motion, accepted the amendment, Peggy Buley seconds, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I say, okay, we talked about the LDRs before on the, on the rental properties, and, okay, page one thirty-five. And that's, uh, section five fourteen oh five. Okay, and I'm one, let me see, s- one thirty-five, fourteen oh five, okay. One of the things I thought we had in a current ordinance where we have waterfront property is that all boats and trailers are, uh, boats and trailers should not be stored in the front yard where it's waterfront property. I thought that's in the current LDRs, and I, I didn't see it in this one, and if it's not in this one, I would like to add, all boats and boat trailers are prohibited from parking or storing in the front yard of any residential waterfront property.
Okay, so under.
I, I, I didn't see it in here.
Create a four.
Create a four, yeah.
Okay, so create a four?
Boats or trailers should not be permitted in the front yard, so we're saying.
Yeah, all boats and boat trailers are prohibited from parking or, or storing in the front yard of any residential or waterfront property.
Waterfront property.
Residential. Waterfront.
It's residential, any, any, or any of them, like, uh.
Any residential property.
Any waterfront residential property.
Any waterfront property, in other words, you have a canal behind your apartment building, they shouldn't be parking the boats in the parking lot in the front.
Yeah.
Or especially like out in Keystone, you know, you don't wanna start having these boats in, uh, uh, parking on people's.
No boat, boat.
Yards and all that other stuff, it becomes very unsightly, or like on Emerald Drive or Arch Creek, you, 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 you don't wanna see boats in the, uh, in the driveway, we had that ordinance on the books for years, I don't know what happened to it.
So, let me, boats or trailers should not be permitted in the front yard of waterfront residential property.
Yeah, and that covers all R one.
Boat and boat trailers.
R one and R two.
Boats and boat trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
R one, R two, the whole, the whole gambit.
Well, do you have to say?
Uh, R one, R two, four, five.
Are you gonna have to say single family?
I'm sorry, Bob?
Are you, are you gonna have to add single family to that?
Well, that's R one.
Hmm?
That's R one.
Front yard.
But just say waterfront residential property doesn't do it, right?
I mean. Waterfront.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because, uh, like on Emerald or, 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 who, who, go down, go to the Malloryka Towers in San Souci, yeah, that was like, you don't want that out there.
Town, no.
Family.
But what about, eh, eh, there's a lot of people who aren't even waterfront.
Waterfront property.
That.
What?
Single family, what?
Single family?
If there's no other place, I think it's, I think it's required to park on the side.
Yeah, you have to park it on the side.
You gotta park it on the side.
What is it? Cause everybody, or, most people in my neighborhood park it on the side, and they keep it indoors, I don't think it's funny this way.
Okay.
Okay.
No, but those are waterfront properties, so they, they already, I mean, that, that, so those are for.
So, they don't even want it to be even, uh, out, out of the setback, they don't want it period.
Yeah, those are for other properties.
Okay, great.
Non-waterfront property.
Yeah, should I make a motion on it?
Question. So, what if they were, the, so, if they just drive it to the driveway and they wanna wash it down?
That's, that's okay, no one's gonna bother.
So, we're talking about stored, should not be stored?
Yeah, that, that's. Yeah, that's what I said, not be stored.
Okay.
Like, from weekend to weekend.
From, from storage in the.
Parked, I think parked is probably a better term.
Well, no, because.
Stored, I think stored.
Stored is better, because you gotta park it to wash it down.
Stored, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably, all right, wash your engine.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll compare language, Gary.
Okay. Okay. All right, the chair can accept that.
Uh, okay, uh, I, some move?
Mike moves, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Buley, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're good on that, next item.
Okay, page one forty-two, parking garages, my favorite floor here.
Ah, yes, here we go, finally, I wonder when we're gonna get to this one.
One, one of the, one of the, let me give a, a little history here, one of the things I see with the parking garages around the city, like, I'll give you an example, like LA Fitness, you got the lights on top of the roof, they're shining into the residential area, you got the lights permeating from the garage into the residential area, it's, it's just, it's wrong, it's absolutely wrong, they got away with it before, now the new regulations say you can't do it. So, what I would like to add to this is, it says, add to number six, let me see here, uh, all existing parking.
Number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, 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 uh, section?
One F.
Page one forty-two, section five fourteen oh eight, A one F, okay, first of all, you have, A, what the hell was that?
A one F already prohibits that from occurring.
Okay, providing lighting fixtures are cut off, okay, where you have the, the two hundred feet? Okay, providing lighting fixtures with are cut off, uh, uh, which are cut off or directly aimed so that they are not directly visible from any property in the R one or R two, I wanna change that to all residential areas, okay? That, that should be, uh, uh, R, R one, two, four, and five.
Which page are you on?
Uh, page one forty-two.
Page one forty-two.
One forty.
A F.
F.
In all residentially zoned districts.
Yeah, and, and that should, and, and change the two hundred to fifty feet, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I see light shining into people's houses, that's absolutely preposterous, that's wrong.
Yeah, no.
Well, a lesser distance is less restrictive, a more of a distance is more restrictive.
Say, wh- what way?
Right.
You, you said two hu- change two hundred to fifty.
No, it's two hundred feet, it should be cut back to fifty feet.
No, it should be la- a larger distance.
No, it should be.
So, that would be less restrictive.
That would be actually, actually, if they could s- if you can't see at two hundred feet.
Two hundred, okay.
Two hundred is the right number.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, then, tell, let me, okay, thank you, counselor, okay.
So, it's not visible for, from any?
So, from any property in, and adjacent residential.
Okay. All right, and then, A two F.
In all residentially zoned districts.
Would the fifty feet make much of a difference, should it be more?
Yeah, no.
Well, the two hundred.
No, you don't wanna see it from two hundred feet.
I mean, should it, should it be from a hundred and fifty versus two hundred, or is, is the fifty feet difference?
Right. The further away, the, the more restrictive.
No, that's more restrict, so I would go, you go the five hundred.
So, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, the reverse of that, so what, will we say three hundred feet, or?
No, I thought that you shouldn't see, in other words, that light shouldn't shine out more than fifty feet.
Two five, okay.
That's what I want, I, I don't want that light shining out more than fifty feet.
Right.
So, then it goes from the two hundred to two hundred fifty?
Well, at, at this point, you're two hundred, you're two hundred feet.
You follow what I'm saying?
It already says two hundred. That's more restrictive than fifty feet.
You're going the wrong way.
Or not directly visible from any property, okay, oh, okay, within, within two hundred feet of the parking structure, I got you.
You go further up, right?
He's seen from two hundred feet. Fifty feet.
Right.
You're getting close.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm confused.
He's going the wrong way.
So, he should've gone to two hundred fifty, right?
Right.
No, 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 yeah.
If he wants to increase it, he keeps it big.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If I live two hundred feet away from that building, I don't wanna see that light.
I don't wanna see that light.
Same way is, you're thinking that if you live closer to the building.
Yeah, I don't wanna see that light.
It's already covered, within the two hundred.
Huh?
So, that's what I'm saying, so.
You don't wanna parking garage.
So, he, I thought he was suggesting two hundred fifty.
No, 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 I, I, I don't, I don't want that light shining.
He suggested two hundred.
So, within, within that two hundred feet.
So, then that would be the two fifty.
That's restricted, so if that light can be seen anywhere in between that two hundred feet, they're violating the law.
Okay, is that, is that what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, then you should add more feet than taking away feet.
Well, no, two hundred feet should be enough, that's good.
So, is it any adjoining residential district, or?
All, all, yeah, yeah, R one, two.
No, but it doesn't matter what residential district is, but it needs to be surrounding that property, if you're ten blocks away and you happen to see the light, it's not gonna bother you, that shouldn't be a violation.
One, I, I, if you're in Keystone, a- and, and you have that bill, that, that, uh, parking garage over there, yeah, it bothers you. It bothers you, you're in the R one, if you're in a, in a condo, a- and, and you have the parking, you have on a hundred and thirty-fifth street, a- and you're living across the street and you have that light and you're in an apartment.
Right, but it's an adjoining residential district.
What if you're in a mixed-use facility and you have residential?
Say it again, Bob.
What if you're in a mixed-use facility and you've got lighting and residential?
Yeah, that should, that light shouldn't be per- shining into your residence.
Yeah, right.
I mean, and because we have now all types of, uh, things that we're putting in here about blocking it and so forth and so on, yeah, let's, let's go down there a second here.
It's.
Yeah, cause, um.
I'm, I'm gonna recommend that you change it to any adjoining residential district.
There you go, make it a general.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so move the item.
It is a nuisance.
Yeah, go ahead, chairman.
I'll second it.
Do you, you, you're okay?
I'd, I'd move the light, or, or.
So, instead of specifying R one, R two, it's gonna be any adjoining residential district.
I'm, I mean, but.
Let's see. Adjoining? You want a different word?
Abutting?
Use words.
Abutting?
Use your inside word.
Yes, it has to be a budding.
Abutting, not adjoining, one of them means across the street, do you remember which one?
So, a budding would be, well, if you, well, look at it this way, if, if a bus and you, would that impact the distance?
Well, see, the interesting thing about the example he just put up is that there's a canal behind the garage, so, they're not abutting, they're across the canal.
No, actually, the code is weird and it may include across.
If there's a canal behind the garage, a- 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 and, um.
Does it, does a canal break the adjacency?
Let's, hold on, looking for definition.
You know, like, like in Keystone, you got all those parking garages on a hundred and thirty-fifth street, and you got those lights shining out, that's not right.
So, we should say adjacent, so, the definition of adjacent? Properties that are across a local street or waterway from a parcel of land.
Okay, all right, so we'll come.
So, we say adjacent.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Chairman.
To any adjacent residential district.
Yeah, all right, so, do we get a motion and a second on this adjoining, any, any adjoining residential?
Yes.
Adjacent.
Change it now to adjacent?
Adjacent, yeah.
Okay, so any adjacent residential district.
Um, wait, wait.
I make the motion?
Yeah, motion was already made.
Um, it should say abutting or adjacent.
Okay.
Abutting or adjacent.
Right, abutting means parcels which share property line or it's separated by a, an alley, so if it's next door, that's covered too.
Yeah.
If you say a- adjacent, it's only across the street or wa- or across the water.
Okay, abutting or adjacent.
Abutting or adjacent.
Good, good thinking, good thinking.
Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion to include abutting and adjacent.
All right, motion is admitted to include abutting or adjacent.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Buley, all in favor?
All right.
All right, next item, Kenny.
Okay. Okay, the same thing with the parking garages, now you have, which, this, I thought this is a pretty good ordinance, you had no lighting fixtures on to the top floor of the parking garage shall be located at a height above the surface of the top parking level of, uh, or greater than three, three and one half feet. Right now, over there at the LA Fitness, you got that darn thing sticking way the hell up, about fifteen feet in the air, it's, it's horrendous, I, I have one, uh, 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 you got, what I'd like to add, and I don't know if we can do this, I think we can, because we did it with the parking, I'd like to add something to the effect, all existing parking garages that are adjacent to any residential district shall be buffered by landscaping and brought into conformance within the provisions of this subsection within three years.
That's not gonna help the roof.
Huh?
Not gonna help the roof.
No, but all of those things now, the subsection says that all of these lights have to be, this is what you're, you're putting out there now, you put out there now that the parking garages have to have baffles or a design in front of it, you're putting it out there now that they have to be landscaped, you're saying now that the, the lights can't shine more, that you can't have the lights visible from two hundred feet. Well, the existing parking garages that are not in conformance with that, I wanna bring them into conformance, so that's why I'm saying, let's add another section to this, all existing parking garages that are not in conformance.
Okay, so are you sug- are, are you specifically referring to roofs?
I'm referring to the whole thing, the whole ordinance, the whole ordinance.
Now, what he means is.
But you're concerned about ground, I thought your issue was roof lighting.
The lighting on the roof, the second floor, the third floor, whatever it is, it's permeating out, according to this new ordinance, you're not supposed to see that, am I correct, it's supposed to be blocked and decorated and have landscaping out there and so forth.
Okay, the point I'm trying to make.
Yes, sir.
At, at almost one o'clock, is, if you're concerned is this section five, which is a roof section, you could, you could adopt something that specifically refers to buffering of lighting fixtures that may have been approved greater than three and a half feet, instead of just dealing with a general landscaping provision, which is another issue entirely.
Well, I, I like the whole thing here, because what, what I see, like at LA Fitness, like, I, I, you know, you, you have this garage, and you have the lights, like, say this, the first floor, the second floor, the third floor, you have all that light permeating through into the residential area. Now, according to this new ordinance, you're supposed, am I correct, you're supposed to have it baffled, decorative, where it's not supposed to be shining through?
That was always there, it was already existing.
Hmm? No, ma'am.
It was existing.
It wa- it was only maybe, no, it's, it has not.
Wouldn't the LA Fitness probably been, you know?
Five years ago, six years ago?
We haven't changed the code from two thousand.
I, I, I like to see all of them, I mean, there are, there are garages on a hundred and thirty-fifth street, there are garages on San Souci, I got the, um, the Johnson and Wales garage, i- it's horrendous, y- y- you, you, you can't enjoy your backyard.
Besides the buffering, you want to limit the height of the lights on the, on the top floor.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's no reason why the people cannot enjoy their yards, they've been there for years and have all these lights coming into them, I really, it, it's,
Is that what you're saying, counselor?
The big complaint I got over there on, on, uh, where, um, your street, Kevin, that, that people are horrible.
I think counsel had a suggestion, counsel, you had a suggestion?
No, I'm s- I'm suffering here.
Okay.
So, if somebody receives a permit to install lighting, they are in effect grandfathered, um, with, so, I guess my suggestion is for subsection five and the prior section F, I would add separate sentences for each section that say something like, um, if lighting was installed in, uh, which does not satisfy these requirements, uh, buffering must be, uh, installed within X time period from the date of this amendments to shield the lights, something like that.
Yeah, I would give it like three years, something like that, yeah.
Jennifer, you okay with that?
Sure.
I guess the part that's, that it confused because.
I think it's gonna be challengeable.
It's like, even though they received.
The part that's always been there.
Right, but the, apparently there's violation, well, which one?
And it's violation.
Which one?
Because right now, it says, uh, parking.
Well, it's R one, R two, they've expanded it.
May, may, may I call your attention to something here, parking garages, and go to, go to, back to page one forty-two, parking garages A one E, okay? And, and please follow with me here, it says, E says, screening shall be, screening shall use architectural elements used in the building development and will incorporate at a minimum architectural screenings, awnings, Bahama shutters, or similar treatment to ensure that the garage is built architecturally pleasing and provides a buffer for light intrusion and allows for privacy of adjacent abutting residential neighborhoods, and I wanna see all parking garages in the city that are existing now be required to do that.
Well, let's just say that then.
Hmm?
Let's, let's say it there.
He wants you to say, he wants it to delete all of these.
But the, the existing ones now that are built, I, I, I like to get where they have to come into compliance in three years.
So, it's, it's a simple sentence, like garages not in compliance with the sections shall comply within three years of the date of this amendment.
Okay. I mean, would we put that on, would we put that on the E?
Right?
Of the C L D.
Yeah, under E, cause that's a screening.
Okay. And, and then you, and then would you do the same thing under, uh, no lighting, the same thing?
I think it, I think it covers both F and five, cause you're talking about screening.
Well. Now, if they're all buildings, does that include y- your condos, for instance, that have the parking?
This is just parking garages.
Just parking garages, but parking garages could also be a condo that has a parking garage that abuts a residential.
Is this principal and accessory?
I'm, I'm thinking of the one over by, uh, um, Keystone Point.
Four dash, five dash fourteen oh eight, is the principal and accessory.
Yeah. That has a parking garage.
Yeah, the one on a hundred and thirty-fifth?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I would.
Okay, all right, now.
So, we just say that, principal.
This, I have to defer this to, to the counselor on this, you have a homeowners association within that building
And accessory. Well.
that would have to, they have to incur that cost and vote on it, what legal challenges could they bring about, Jennifer, that would, would be a hindrance to.
With this section.
Should be brought into compliance.
To enacting this as an ordinance.
Oh, it would be like the same thing with the paved gar- with the paved driveways or rental property.
Well, not necessarily.
May I, may I make a suggestion?
I'm trying to hear the recommendations that.
The maximum extent practicable?
Yeah.
Um, when you're telling them they have to come into compliance, because if you've got a, a huge structure, um, staff, you know, trying to come up to every single one of those standards could be, you know, uh, challenging, and they usually try to say, the maximum is.
So, at.
To the maximum extent.
As determined by CP and D staff?
No, I mean, let's say to the maximum, uh, extent, you know.
How many year, how long you wanna give them?
The mic.
Five, oh my god.
She wants you to speak into the mic.
Debbie, Debbie.
I'll be, I might be. Let's go to four. Ah, come on, I'd be, be an old man by that time, anyway.
Within three years?
Yeah.
That's his recommendation.
She said she still can't hear you, she wants you to speak into the mic.
Three years.
That's right, somebody turned my mic off. Um, all existing principal and accessory parking structures not in compliance with this section shall be brought into compliance to the maximum extent practicable within three years.
As a, practical, as determined by CP and D staff?
Thank you, as determined.
Within three years of the adoption of this amendment.
Three years of adoption. Three years of adoption.
I, I, I would say, um, D R C.
This amendment.
Taken, sorry.
By the, by the D R C?
As determined by the D R C.
Not just C P and D.
What's that?
Can't take the heat?
It's a good idea, it, it would read, all existing principal and accessory parking structures not in compliance with this section
parking garage.
shall be brought, parking.
Garage.
Garages, sorry, parking garages not in compliance with this section shall be brought into compliance to the maximum extent practicable as determined by the D R C within three years of adoption of this amendment.
Of the effective date of.
Uh, the effective.
Li- little suggestion, um, would they be allowed to separate the condominiums such as on one hundred thirty fifth and say make that four years?
Of the L D Rs.
And then the other commercial ones, or just four years, because what's gonna happen is the condo associations are gonna have to notice, they're gonna have to at their annual meeting pass, they're gonna have to pass a special assessment.
Make it all four years, go ahead.
You know, four years, you're okay with that?
They could make it four years, what do you have?
Because for the driveways, we gave seven, you know, so, we, cause it's definitely gonna be, uh, a cost that they're gonna have to add on.
Right. Well, thank, yeah, I was, I was bringing that, about to bring that up, Kevin, and, and I wanted to get a, a legal opinion from Jennifer regarding the homeowner's associations with regards to if there's a time limit with, with having them institute a special assessment uh, to their residents, and, and if the four years or three years was enough time, in your opinion.
In my opinion, um, working as council to code enforcement and seeing so many, um, homeowner's associations, um, have much larger problems than this.
Hmm.
Um, usually, it takes no more than six to eight months for them to get their evaluations in,
Hmm.
um, which would come in from licensed, um, contractors, engineers, architects, to get that dollar figure, and then get it through the special assessment process.
Right.
So, um, I would think four years is sufficient time, not only for them to pass that special assessment, but to make the repairs.
But it's done annually though, correct? Collect it, collect it, yeah, and make the repairs, cause they still have to put it out for bid process, and then, and vote on it, so four years is fine, I'm, I'm happy with four years.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, I, I. Alright, I move, I move the item, second.
Alright, Mike moves it to four years, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, one, one, one other question on four, uh, I guess it's number four, no lighting fixtures on the top floor of the parking garage shall be located at a height above the surface of the top parking level or greater than three and a half feet, do we have to do the same thing with this one?
No, that's, that's gonna cover all of this.
It depends what you want, yeah.
That's gonna cover all of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, alright, let's move on, thank, thank you folks, I think we got something.
On, uh. Yeah, copy to each, uh, yeah.
Okay, art on page, uh, two twenty one.
Mister East, before you go there, just if I may, Mister Chairman, did, asking the staff on same page one forty two, if you look at number two, A. It says, uh, number two, all parking garages on all other parcels of land shall, now, we're talking about a pre-standing parking garage that has nothing to do with residential or commercial on top of it.
You're talking about the one we put like on Eighth Avenue here.
Yeah, not about street intersections. How do you get into a parking garages, and, and she, the planner tried to explain this to me, get into a parking garage if you're not abutting a street or an intersection?
Well, street or intersection, this says street intersection.
Yeah, intersection, it's very specific, you don't want that at your intersection of your streets, because you're trying to, to redevelop, it's a design issue.
Yeah, so you may wanna come in from one or two different sides.
It's a design issue.
This is not an issue.
It's a design issue.
So, you wouldn't want a, when the city builds a parking garage, you're not gonna want it on the corner of Ninth and, uh, uh, one hundred twenty third, not, not on the corner.
No, not on the corner, it has to be, has to be set back away from the corner.
Right.
Right.
And, and then, or, in, in that same section, if we go to two C, and I think we should add, you know, R four, R five, R six and B Z, cause I think, you know, that should be taken into account.
Which one, Nixon, Nixon, which one are you talking about?
What do you want, what do you want to change, Nixon?
Two C, cause he's only, he, uh, he talked about R four and R five, I think sure, all the multifamily is on in this street.
For R five, uh-huh. Okay.
Alright, so you want, so you wanna make it.
The R six and B Z.
Okay, move the item.
All, multi-family.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
All, all multifamily.
Oh.
Okay.
Alright, made by Mike, seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that carries.
Okay, uh, art selection committee, page two twenty one, section five dash.
What page again, I'm sorry, sir?
Two twenty one.
Two twenty one.
Two two one. Okay, ouch, two two one, okay, we didn't make any changes to this and you're looking to make some changes to the art selection committee.
Okay, um, this, this is what I, I, I have a problem with, I brought this up before, uh, in my conversations with staff, and, and membership qualifications, and it says here, and may not operate or own or be employed by or, or, and an art dealer, et cetera, okay? Uh, isn't that gonna be a problem if you wanna set up a committee, because these people are, 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 are living here in the city?
Yeah, they're all gonna work for somebody.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, 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 I think we're kinda like saying, what do we?
I think like we're saying, what, what are we doing, these are the people that are in the city.
Yeah, how do we achieve that special qualification if they're not employed?
They're gonna be working for somebody.
How do you, how do you deal with that?
So, to give you guys a little bit of background on the art selection committee, um, the art selection committee was not originally created to judge murals. What they were originally, um, created to do was to purchase public artwork on behalf of the city of North Miami. So by necessity, we didn't want the judges of the art to be anyone that would be employed by an artist or an art gallery or an art dealer, that would be perhaps, um, biased or influenced in purchasing art um, that's supposed to be on view and for the benefit of enjoyment for the public.
Okay.
So that, that's just the background and history on that.
Hi, you, you answered that, okay. Alrighty, I, I, uh, I'm gon- I'm done with that, and I guess we're gonna go to definitions then, so, now, well, first off, I think the order of business is to make a motion to
To approve the section.
Uh, approve the section, section five.
Has, has amended.
Has amended.
Have we, is there anything remaining in section five?
Not for me.
No, nobody else, okay, then.
No, you, on the, just one question, there's some things that are just, that aren't. Short-term rentals, we've changed the ordinance, we didn't change the ordinance, we've added a new ordinance about advertising, and that was gonna be incorporated into here, correct?
We are currently preempted by state statute from touching our, our short-term rental, so, um, we wouldn't advise touching anything in chapter twenty nine in regards to short-term, cause we will lose our grandfather status if we were to try to regulate it. We are one of the very few cities that are lucky to, to have instituted our ban prior to the preemption.
Forty-five.
So, I would be very careful with touching any of that.
We have an ordinance on the books.
Exactly, and we, and it stays on the books, and we are grandfathered in, as long as we don't touch it any further.
That addresses advertising and short-term rentals.
So, for the moment, we're locked into it, and we'll just leave it.
So, I do the.
We're not, okay, that's fine, we're not changing it.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, just house cleaning on one item, two seconds, on page seventy-seven.
Uh.
Under trees, there's just, and I spoke to the arborist about this.
What is the housekeeping item?
Um, it says, on item one, it says two inches, a minimum caliber of two inches. But when you go to the next page, and you go to eleven, it says four inches. It should be four inch caliber, you want a four inch caliber of a nice tree, um, as opposed to the flimsy little two inch ones you're, you're, you're doing, right? So, um.
I, uh, I don't, I see, okay, all the way at the bottom.
All the way at the very bottom, um, it says tree sizes, except trees, blah, 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 two inch, it should be four, but then
It says four.
when you go down and do no, item number eleven, it asks for four inch caliber at the time of planning also, so it's a little conflicting there, so. Should be four, bigger the better.
It's three inches, but it's, it's going separate, but. It said eleven, right, four inches?
Yeah, number one, and then, and number eleven's at four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Fourteen foot minimum overall height, a minimum caliber of four.
Change it, F to one to four.
So, one will be changed to four, okay, fine, alright, motion of that effect?
So move, so move.
Alright, moved by Mike, seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fine, now, let's move on article five.
Mister Chairman, I move that, uh, we approve article five and the amendments that were, uh, added, uh.
And, and, uh, and corrected.
Alright, Charlie Ernst moves for adoption of article five is amended, Ms. Buley seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, article six, non-conformities, report of staff, please.
Alright, um, one of the things that we did here in this section, in this article, I'm sorry, not section, in this article is, it was really reti- re- retitled, and it was revised to provide, um, for more predictability, and, um, uh, especially giving the better clarity to continued existence of these uses, um, and, uh, structures and lawful lots as well of those items that were established prior to the effective date of the L D Rs. Um, for ex- ins- for example, the article now includes specific standards dealing with expansion of non-conforming uses and the change from one non-conformity to another non-conforming use as well as the destruction. What happens when a lawfully non-conforming use gets, um, structure gets destroyed?
I'm lost, are you asking us or are you telling?
Oh, yeah, I'm lost.
Oh, okay.
I'm done, sorry, it's, it's, it's early morning.
Alright, does anyone have a question on this issue? Are you asking the question of what happens when they tear it down, or are you explaining?
It, it tell, um, it, it explains now, it gives better clarity for what will o- occur.
Okay, alright.
I move to accept the language.
Alright, Ms. Buley moves to accept the languages presented, do we have a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any other issues on non-conforming uses? If not, the chair will call for motion to accept article six.
So move, so.
Alright, Mike moves to accept article six, Ms. Buley seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, article seven, definitions.
We updated a lot of the definitions that you see here, the bulk of what occurred was, uh, when we brought over the tree, um, section and expanded the landscaping, so we had to bring over the associated definitions. We did consolidate, uh, some of the definitions and added, uh, some specific planning terms to explain what some of these planning terms were, um, like net lot area, what does that mean? Uh, we added certain other types of, um, uh, definitions such as recovery residence, uh, tattoo parlor, vessel, again, that's a, a, from a, uh, a a court ruling, uh, we defined private school vehicles, uh, and we revised certain definitions that had the regulations built into it, which you never wanna have your regulations actually built into it, such as the design excellence that we mentioned earlier. That was actually within the definition, so we moved that over to the appropriate location on page, um, fourteen that you'll see here. So, that gives you the overview of the major changes that were, that occurred in the definitions.
Okay, I have, I have an item on section seven.
Alright, Mike has an item on, uh, section seven here. What page?
Uh, thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight.
Second paragraph in reference to rental.
Retail showrooms, is that where we're going?
Mm-hmm, automobile, automobile means the use, et cetera, et cetera, and it says, we shall be operated on a site of at least one acre.
I'm sorry, my, my, my apologies, sir.
I'm sorry.
What definition were you talking about, sir?
Page thirty-eight, second paragraph, it begins retail showroom, he's questioning the one acre.
Page thirty-eight, second paragraph.
Which should be operated on a site of at least one acre, um, Nixon, this is, this is an existing one.
This one, retail, okay, page thirty-eight, I'm sorry.
Retail showroom, comma, automobile.
Uh, this was, uh, this stemmed from a text amendment that was approved by the city council, I think, two years ago, to allow retail automobile showroom. And that's why, you know, this was put as, approved as part of the text amendment, two years ago.
Is this what, is this property on Biscay?
Yes, sir.
Well, we, we had the discussion when we were going through that, and it's in the minutes from the last meeting, that, um, retail sho- or retail showroom
shouldn't.
without automobile, was excluding automobile. That definition.
I remember that.
Back to, to the permitted use table.
Okay, but this one only applies to automobiles, so there's different kinds of services.
Automobiles.
So this is a different, yes.
Yeah.
I have a question, um, on page thirty-eight, roots or root systems, that last part where it says, and, um, used for extracting water, gases, and nutrients from the soil and atmosphere, what do you mean by that?
Can we finish the?
Yeah, that's funny.
Oh, I thought you guys were done, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Did you wanna raise the acreage or reduce it?
Reduce it.
To?
Well, um, I don't know, um.
Well, why are we concerned with it, 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 it is there?
Well, because we have these, these new boutique dealers that are, that are opening up, that have virtual showrooms and that kind of thing. Um, that, uh, you know, operate at a much smaller, I've seen a couple of them in Broward, and basically, they, they operate on very small sites.
Like just a storefront sometimes.
Uh, yeah.
On, on Lincoln Road, they had a Tesla.
Yeah.
Tesla, yeah.
In the storefront.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I think, um, Mister Burns also expressed that most of the property around here is small, is, it's not that much land anyways, so.
True enough.
Well, when, when I grew up in New York, in, uh, um, the fifties and the sixties, you had a Cadillac showroom on Fifth Avenue, it was just small, I, I, I mean, I just, I don't understand why we're.
Maybe half an acre?
Well, I think, I think what happened here is the intent was to limit, uh, your, your, your older style car lots and not address, we, we really have never addressed what we're seeing with the, the boutiques. So, rather than change this language, they kept this language in here, not realizing that there's a different trend or, or, um.
Yeah.
The ability to use a smaller facility to display a car and not have a big car lot anymore.
The other point is, this paragraph allows servicing of vehicles, and if you're gonna create a use
Right.
We don't need.
that's just a storefront, then you'd wanna limit it to display, and not service it.
Right.
Yeah, at the end of this definition, we wouldn't qualify for Tesla to come in and show their cars.
Right. And for that matter, even the Mini, the Mini Cooper place on, uh, on the Boulevard or Fiat, uh, the, that's not even an acre.
Right. That's not an acre. Right.
And all they do really there is, it's a showroom, so I think what we have here is existing language that's already, that's outdated, or, or that's, we've got.
Display. If, so, if you wanna allow less than an acre, I think you would add something that says, if a, if a automobile, retail showroom.
If it's a retail, it's retail sales only, it doesn't have to be an acre, something of that sort?
Sorry. I would say something like, if, if an automobile showroom is proposed for less than one acre, it would be for display only.
Yeah, something of that sort.
Cause then there's no buffering.
Okay, so that will allow the boutique dealers to.
Display or sell, well, yeah, cause you can do a sale.
Display their sale.
Right, sure, I, I meant that, that would be included.
Or you could say not, for what you're trying to do, which is the way a lot of communities are going, it's for display and inventory, it's not a full-service dealership.
Right, right.
Which is permitted, um, this board approved, the council approved, with the one acre and all that, but the added section that is permitted for the Teslas, the Mini Coopers, um, some of the small ones that are not doing the, the whole service and, the, all that kinda stuff, it's not the, the, the Ocean Cadillac, the, the Volvos
The whole service. Right.
that created this item, the, the Audi and all that, but the new, again, Tesla is the perfect one, and as the attorney said, on Lincoln Road, they're in a showroom with five cars, and then you have some inventory there.
So, can we, uh?
Actually, they only ever kept two cars there, and they closed that.
Yeah.
Um.
This last year, but, I understand the point, we, we need to, we need to recognize it.
So, council, what was the language you proposed?
Less than one acre for display and inventory.
Right, on, yeah, automobile retail showrooms of less than one acre shall be for display or sell only, without servicing of any kind.
Can we wa- add the word inventory?
Inventory then, pre- is what you normally have in your car lot, in your car dealerships, is you have it.
For display and sale only.
Okay, alright, so I move the item?
Yeah.
Alright. We move to adopt that new language?
Second.
So what is it, what, so what does it say, please?
All right. So if it's on a site of less than one acre, shall be for display and sale only.
Or sale, yeah, display or sale only.
Display or sale only.
Could be virtual also.
Yeah.
A lot of them do that, you have to walk in and show them, they have one model sitting there, and then they got screens that you can just, you know, create your own car. You know, there's, there's one other point I got here, and I'm looking at this, it says, "For minor services of vehicle previously sold or leased of the same brand." Now, well, well, okay, my, the Lexus dealer I go to now, now he's got in the showroom, he's got Mercedes and other vehicles up there, so that, that wouldn't put him as in the, make him illegal? That if he wants to sell Mercedes out of his showroom, he can't do that?
That, I think that reply, uh applies to servicing. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
Among other secondary supporting uses, an inventory of vehicles for sale or lease and onsite facilities for minor services. Of the, so, so in other words, what this is saying is that if you're a Lexus dealer.
You gotta sell Lexus used cars, but he, he has other vehicles in there now, and.
That's not what this is saying, this is saying that it, that if you're going to service vehicles, you owe.
That, thank you, if you're going to service vehicles and you're a Lexus dealer, that you only service Lexus vehicles.
But he can sell, he can sell um.
Doesn't, it doesn't limit the inventory that he could sell, it's really that he's going to only service Lexus.
All right, now, actually, I would like to.
Here's the, here's the prob- wait a minute, Kevin, please, here's the problem, Debbie?
Yes, sir.
This is the problem with that. We have a Lexus dealer over here who sells non-Lexus cars that come with guarantees or remain, remainder guarantees, and they service them.
Service them elsewhere.
They have to service them elsewhere.
He means, so if I buy a car somewhere, like, I'm a, and I'm, and I have confidence in the, and they say, "You bring it here, you bought it here, you bring it here and we'll service it," I gotta go west Broward somewhere to find a de- a dealer to service my car?
Same dealer should have a different location.
That's a, that's a.
I think that's excessively burdensome.
And that's burdensome on the buyer, for God's sakes.
But I think, you know, for this again, this was in a specific application for a specific property on the C two BW district. And this is why, you know, this is, I had to, you know, if we wanna change it, I think maybe that's you, cause, cause, and I just realized that the, uh, we have to go back to Article Four on the permitted use table, cause we eh, forget, forget to put that under the u- eh, eh vehicle related, you know, uses. Cause I think, we have, you know, retail showroom, and this is what, you know, Commissioner Petron.
But we did add that, it already has that.
No, but on the vehicle related uses.
I thought we had, we, I think we did.
No, it, com- Commissioner Petron has to, asked us to make a distinction between those two.
And I thought we did.
Yeah.
I thought it was there, but let me go, let me take a look.
So we need to go back and put that there, but I take it, now, are we gonna allow it, is it as per the text amendment, which had recommended, you know, C two BW, or we gonna put it in other, every other commercial district? So we need to discuss that.
I think it's a separate issue. One is the brands and the other is where it's located.
Under my, if I may, under my understanding of this particular um ordinance, which I, I, I represented a particular Volvo at the time, um, we were led to believe that we could sell a used Mercedes, a used Jaguar, and we could service that vehicle at the service department because that, or if somebody wanted to bring a Volvo from North Dade and come down and have a service, they could. If somebody had a regular car and wanted an oil change within that service center, they, they could.
Those are only conditions.
Uh, as long as it wasn't the main purpose of that.
I worked on that thing.
You were misled.
But isn't that a different classification?
Well, see, that, that, that's, that's something that's wrong with this, because automotive cars today are so computer oriented, they're, they're so technologically advanced. Dealers and manufacturers are spending millions of dollars on these service departments, and they have the capability. And just say, "Well, I'm sorry, you're only selling Hondas, that's, that's all it says there is Honda, so you can't serve anything but a Honda," that's.
But there's a classification for that, which you've just described, and it's vehicle sales and displays.
Yeah.
This is a different, this is a different business. The showroom is what was designed to be a showroom.
Well, the showroom is fine, but we're talking about getting the vehicle serviced.
That's, that wouldn't be in a showroom.
Right, and that's part of this definition, however.
No, this is for an acre facility.
But, but that's what it is, on, under this, it was, and the purpose of, when we brought Volvo here, was to have a, a showroom, sales of new and used cars, and a service department within the confines, as long as it was one acre of, of property.
Right.
Uh, and the service was included, and that's why you had the minimum of, of the one acre. The showroom concept is what Mike just brought up about having uh some cars, inventories, Tesla, you know, concept. But the one acre was to, so people could get, go and buy and have their car serviced at Lexus or Audi, but not on a ten acre site, but on something that was at least a uh, a, a one acre site, such as the, the property we had at Rizling.
So just to move this along, I think the recommendation that you're considering is to strike the language in the middle of the paragraph that says, "Previously sold or leased of the same brand or manufacturer licensed to the retail showroom owner."
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it was, right?
Yeah.
It's, you're allowed an inventory of vehicles for sale or lease and onsite facilities for minor servicing of vehicles, comma, provided that the sale of pre-owned, pre-leased automobiles shall be subordinate to principal use, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, that works.
So in.
Some move? Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt that language?
Well, my question is, was, the question we have when we discussed this originally, is there is a classification referred to as vehicle sales and service.
Vehicle sales. Right.
Vehicle sales displayed, major, minor, used, there's all of that.
Right.
And then there's this, which seems to be duplicating one of those.
It's, it falls within in.
Which wasn't the, which in my, which in my int- it wasn't the original intent. This was, this classification was established not for all of that.
For specific.
This was gonna be the place to walk in and take a look at the car and place your order, as opposed to the other classification, which is a traditional automobile dealer.
Right.
It says, "I'm buying and selling new and used cars, I can buy a Lexus, I can sell you a Lexus or a Mercedes, and I'll service all of those cars." We have a classification for that. This was not, that was not the intention of this, and it is morphing into the same thing over and over, and I don't know that that was the intent of anybody. Well, it was the intent of some, but it wasn't the intent of, of, of the or, of the, of the definition.
I, I, I believe that, I disagree with you, I believe it was, because the council and this board both passed it, that you could have a piece of property that was one acre, and at least minimum one acre, where you could buy and have your car serviced at that particular location. Um, and this is already what, what the rules is, is permitted.
And that was referred to as vehicle sales and ser- vehicle sales.
And it was a, it was a retail showroom with service, because service was the, as a secondary component, and only taking up a certain percentage of the footprint of that property, it was not a, a, a full service. They could do oil change, tire changes, they could not do bodywork, they could, there was a bunch of other restrictions that went here. And the main part was the retail of, of the vehicles, and the service department was only allowed to take up a per, a certain square, uh, percentage of the, uh, of the facility. It couldn't be eighty percent and then, you know, twenty percent of sales, it had to be a, a certain uh portion of the, uh, of the, uh, of the work.
We remember the discussion differently, I mean, I, I understand.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Bob, because we're, we're getting away from the boutique, boutique showroom.
Boutique was thrown around every other sentence.
We, we are trying to uh come up with uh a way to fit that in to the ordinance, and, and I, we somehow steer, steer it away from that. So, I think Bob's trying to re.
This one is different than what the boutique one, there, there's, Michael was talking about the boutique, which is just showroom, couple cars, and virtual.
Right. Correct.
And then you had, the old rules was thirty acres of land for a, a, a car lot, which was obsolete.
I understand.
And so, the discussion we had was, and that was passed by this board, was that it made sense to go vertical as buildings are doing, you know, Bremen just did it, uh, New York, Chicago, uh, all these areas, because in urban areas, uh, you wanna, you don't wanna have these big, open, spread out car lots, so we moved it all within a parking facility enclosed and so forth, and that's how we came up with these rules and regulations, and that you could, you could service the cars that you sold.
Correct, correct. But again, but that's not what Michael, Michael's intent, I believe, was that if somebody wanted to show two cars
Mm-hmm.
in a storefront somewhere.
Right.
And it, and there's nothing that says, in other words, they are still trapped by that one acre uh restriction.
No, and I, and I agree with him that it should be a storefront, yeah.
But that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to fashion right now.
That, I think that's a whole separate, a whole new, I think it's a whole new separate line that.
And we pass that.
Let's remove that part first.
Yeah, that, there's a whole separate line that says, uh, vehicle, it's actually re- actually it comes under retail.
Kenny brought up about.
You're allowed to have a retail automobile showroom anywhere in the city if it's only to display cars. What would stop somebody from having three cars inside a storefront here on Hundred Twenty-Fifth? There probably shouldn't be any rules against that, because you're not servicing and you're not keeping massive inventories.
But again, yeah, I understand that. But again, we gotta make sure that the one acre rule isn't forbidding that.
Correct.
So that's why we were looking for the language.
I, I think that one acre addresses a whole different component of, of the, the car sales.
But again, we're looking to make sure that one doesn't affect the other.
Right, exactly, I don't want it to affect the other either.
So I think that's where we're, we're stuck at right now.
But I would think that you would allow uh retail uh automobile uh as a permitted use within the uh commercial corridors, if you're only gonna have, you know, four, five, six cars, what do you have within the interior of your, your showroom? Is that what you're trying to get to, Mike?
Well, yeah, but Kenny brought up, uh, what Kenny brought up afterwards, after that motion passed, was about the fact that if you bought, if you went to Lexus, even with the one acre requirement, that if you went to Lexus to buy, say, and you bought a Honda, that you couldn't have the Honda serviced there.
Mm-hmm.
That you would have to find a Honda dealer, God knows where, you know, and it may be a burden on the buyer, that was Kenny's comment on that section.
But I thought the language was suggested was just to omit, um, without changing anything other than just admit that, um, that you could service any of those vehicles within that showroom.
The other thing is, you know, like e- even on the sales up there, eh, they sell now, they're, they got permission from Lexus, they sell high-end used cars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Cause you take it as a trade-in and you sell your own cars.
They sell them there, they're in the show, they're in the showroom, but according to this ordinance, the way I'm reading it, you can't, you can't sell a, a used car that's not a Lexus, you, no, am I reading it wrong? Because there's a different classification.
It's only the servicing, it's only the. It's only the servicing of it.
Okay, thank you, okay, I just, I, I would strike that then.
So, eh, eh, from what you've agreed to, it sounds like that what you've already passed is, addresses um Mike's concern. And I think that what Kevin was trying to do is give you a little bit of support and history behind what you, the changes that you're making.
No, but, but I also take, you know, eh, Commissioner Petron addressed the issue, cause there are two different type of uses in the vehicle related uses. We already have, you know, the minor and the major vehicle sales, which allows for the eh, like any dealership, but this was a specific use, that was indoor automobile showroom, so that's why the language was dra- I worked on that application, that's why it was drafted like that. And this, this commission reviewed that application and then was eh, eh, considered by the city council, and that's how they approved, that was for a specific use, that was a new use that we introduced just for that, in, in, cause we, the code didn't address that, and then that was only for the C two BW district. And then the vehicle sales, you know, are just separately, but this was for specific use, that's why this language is in the, this paragraph, this definition.
Okay.
And it's a small fifteen percent devoted to.
Are you arguing against removing the servicing?
No, no, there, there's a reason for.
Minor service.
Can we move on?
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, Mike will accept the language as presented, no further changes on that, anybody else have something, Mike, any, any other issues you wanna address?
No, I'd just like to make them.
I don't have an issue, just a point of clarification, oh, I'm, I move to, to facet.
Also, um.
Can I read it before we pass it?
Yeah, let's read it, please, so we know what we're passing.
We're talking about removing the servicing restriction, right?
Yes.
So it's removing the language that says, "Previously sold or leased of the same brand or manufacturer licensed to the retail showroom owner." So the clause would read, um, ma- you know, "Shall be operated on a site of at least one acre, may include among other secondary supporting uses, an inventory of vehicles for sale or lease, and onsite facilities for minor servicing of vehicles, provided that sale of pre-owned, pre-leased automobiles by the retail owner, et cetera, shall be subordinate, and is limited to certain restrictions."
Okay.
So removing the restriction on servicing other brands.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, that sounds good.
Okay.
And the restrict, but the restriction on fifteen percent of the gross building area remains in force.
That stays, that stays, yes.
For minor service.
Minor service, yes.
Minor service, yes.
Yes.
All right, um, chair will entertain a motion to accept the language.
I make the motion.
Motion by Kenny, seconded by, by Ms. Boulay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, Mike, do we have any other issues on your end?
No, sir.
No, then the chair will call for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, one, one moment.
Hold, could I just, can I just get this out?
Sure, go ahead. Yeah.
No, go ahead.
It's about the school piece, um, the definitions for school, it's just a point of clarification, and I kind of wanted, I just wanted to make a suggestion as far as the language goes.
School?
Um, for the first definition of schools, uh, it says, "Schools, school means
Mm-hmm.
an educational institution, public or private, um, should charter be added there?
Doesn't that, doesn't that fall within private?
Yeah. No, I think, I think, yeah, I agree with you.
No.
Yeah, or, or public.
I think charter should.
I don't have a problem with adding charter, because there are major distinctions in the eyes of some people between public and charter.
Yeah. Public, private, or charter.
And as well in, um, the third definition for school, special or technical. Uh, it then says, uh, means any institution, private, again, charter, um, charter or public. And then towards the very end, where it says, um, scientific or other special nature, such as art or dance, um, I would like to strike art or dance and replace it with um, fine, visual, liberal, and or performing arts.
Can you repeat it slower?
So.
Get the language, fine, F I.
Fine, visual, liberal, and or performing arts.
Oh, fine?
Fine, F I N E.
Comma, visual.
Visual, liberal, and or performing arts. That way it, it doesn't limit, um, that program to just art and dance, it allows them to explore other, uh, exactly.
Okay, private, charter.
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion, we uh approve the language changes on the uh, the definition of schools.
All right, to incorporate charter and uh the fine, visual, liberal, and or performing arts, seconded by Mike McGiermay, motion made by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I gotta.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve, um. Section. Section seven.
Article seven.
Hang on one, pl- uh.
All right, Kevin, what, is there anything else?
Just real quick. Yes, one, one second, there's actually two, uh, under the parking chart, it says distances setbacks, it says churches, but the definition here says religious institutions, and I think it was.
Oh, I have that, yeah.
And I think it, you wanted to correct that, um, in the chart, back in section, multiple sections.
Okay.
We'll go through and make that change.
Yeah, it refers to churches, but it's really religious institutions.
I, I brought, I brought, I brought that up to staff already, Kevin, I think, let me see, I got it written down here.
You got it, they, they got it.
Our pleasure is to make that change.
Yeah. It's a, it's on the top of the chart on page sixty, uh, should be to religious institutions, that's the terminology that you've been using.
Yeah, this is one of those that. So this is one of those that we already deemed to be an administrative error that would be fixed.
Correct.
Article seven definitions, and section seven dash one oh one, you call, yeah, uh, I, first I had churches and houses of worship, and actually the definition is religious institutions.
Um, it's saying on page thirty-eight and under the automobile things, and this is something I had brought up, um, uh, to others. Um, it's saying on page thirty-eight and under the automobile things, and this is something I had, uh, brought up, um, uh, to others, is that, first paragraph, and it says, uh, we're talking about the boutique, uh, automobile new, principal new automobiles, involving outdoor display of a maximum of twenty automobiles, which no more than thirty percent pre-owned. That was originally, we put this language in when Fiat came, um, um, that's when Fiat had one model. Fiat now has four models, and they have, uh, Alfa Romeo with them, speaking with staff and speaking to other people in the community. There hasn't been a problem at, uh, Fiat or, uh, displaying the vehicles out in that location. Um, and, uh, and speaking, uh, to people in the community, uh, twenty is unrealistic, because if you have the, the five cars and you have one or two of each color, uh, it's, it's, it, the, the, the business would go out of business if they could only put twenty. The city has been very accommodating to them, um, by allowing them to display more cars in parking lot, in parking spaces that are, are permitted, um, so that it could be addressed in the, um, LDRs. Um, and, uh, we go back before the, uh, the council or special master sometime in, uh, October or something to address it. Twenty was unrealistic, it's what they thought. Um, we had suggested sixty and did not get a pushback, uh, have, had conversations with people in the community. Um, they have seventy-five, uh, parking spaces, uh, at that location. And again, the percentages of new and used would stay the same, it's just the amount, the amount of new vehicles you could display.
Why don't we just change it to say involved in the outdoor display of automobiles and drop the number? Because different sites will have different space configurations.
Where are you?
Um, page thirty-eight, section.
Right at the top, the first paragraph, about the sixth array sentence down.
Where the definition?
Outdoor display maximum of twenty automobiles, which no more than thirty percent shall be pre-owned, that section right there?
Yeah, that one, yeah.
And then we just take out any reference to the twenty.
Now, remember, we don't wanna cut back on parking spaces for customers.
Eh, exactly, that would all still, uh, stay the same, and the ratio would still stay the same.
It's just the display of automobiles, instead of, of a maximum of twenty. All right, so we try a display of.
Maybe we don't wanna, we don't wanna be cluttered and.
Automobile.
Right. Right, you don't, you don't want it to look bad.
Yeah.
And, and they don't, okay.
So we, we accept that, the Chair will call for motion on that?
I, I think there should be a number.
Well, but see, every site plan is different, so how do we quantify twenty for one, and then some guy has a bigger space or a smaller space?
That's right.
Well, this is, but this is again for a specific, this isn't for an automo- this isn't for a car dealership. This is for this, back to this retail showroom concept, enclosed building, um, and if you don't put a number in, the number becomes.
Okay, Bob, for this particular, uh, issue, and so that we can, and we can use a real live model of the, the Fiat Alfa Romeo showroom, would you be okay with seventy-five there? Cause there's more than enough space, uh, for that, and Mr. Chairman down the line.
I think seventy-five, Kevin, I think seventy-five's too many.
Okay, what would you suggest?
I don't know, I don't know what the number is, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I do.
Okay.
But if, if you wanna have a discussion about it, I think there needs to be a number. Otherwise, it's uncontrollable.
Be- based on the acre, uh, if, if that's what we're, we're, we're dealing with, an acre of, that we're, we're allowed, but, but at the same time, that, that acre, the, the building may be bigger than, than the lot portion that's available for that dealer, you see what I'm saying?
To, to, to satisfy it and not, and not to, uh, and I, and I understand what the chairman is trying to do, and it's, it's very.
These years, we're trying to micromanage.
You're trying to manage all the businesses, uh, and I understand that. Um, we're comfortable with the sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, uh, unlimited would be great, as long as they were, they had the parking for it. But it's whatever makes the, the board comfortable, and I agree with the chairman that you shouldn't micromanage people who are trying to, to do it, but I, I know the concerns of the community that they don't want it to turn to, into a free-for-all, and, and Charles, you just said that, that you don't want it sloppy, but you gotta have a balance there. Um, so whatever you choose to do, we're fine with.
Kevin, what was your original suggestion?
My feel, since we can't come up with a real number, and every site plan is gonna be different, I propose we just stay involved in the outdoor display of automobiles and not try to quantify it. Because anybody who's in business knows they've gotta provide assigned parking for their employees, they've gotta have parking for their purchasers, they've gotta have space to move cars in.
The market almost dictates what they're gonna do.
Okay, I, I make the motion, Kevin.
Yeah. All right, so Kenny adopts my proposed language, do we get a second?
Yes, I second.
All right.
So the attorney has some input.
Is it possible you should control it through design review or conditional use permit?
That's good.
I don't see that we're there.
That results in a site-by-site analysis by either a board or staff, which provides some rationality to it.
And, and. If I may add to this, this falls under the definition of retail sales and services, which are permitted by right in every commercial district. You know, we. So, that is why, you know, this was eh written the way it is written.
Because they don't do any service there.
That, that, that's just my, my opinion.
They don't do any service there.
And it's also relative to outdoor display, which is something that you all have an issue with anyway.
So why are we telling them how many cars, that, that doesn't make any sense?
So they don't overload the site.
But then the site becomes impractical if they do.
But the, but the, but the, the definition is for a property that's primarily indoors.
Is there an average number that, that any of you know of? Can we?
It's site, it'd be site is what it is.
So if every site is different, why are we trying to micromanage the business? It doesn't, eh, eh, to me, I, I think we, we don't have a way to quantify it.
Because it's an outdoor use.
Because it's outdoor.
Which impacts everybody who passes by and adjacent businesses. And if they overload the site, it will be adversely affected.
It's like outdoors, think of it as outdoor storage.
The mini building may look great, the building may look great, but then he takes and he puts out too many cars around it, and then that becomes clutter, there's no room for, you know, we, somewhere along the line, w- w- we need a.
So, why don't we limit the amount of cars to the, the size of the property?
No, but for this thing.
So maybe we can, we can, uh, maybe, uh, from maybe half acre to an acre, so many cars.
Yes.
But it depends.
I think, uh, I think the, the number of parking.
And the public access to it, and how many driveways do you need to come and go?
Sixty-five, seventy, goes back, they have sixty-five, seventy, goes back and forth.
But it's, it's really not, car shopping is outdoors.
No, well, that's a different cu- to different classification.
It is, it's different.
We've got a classification for automobile showrooms, the automobile dealerships.
The number of which.
I mean, when you go into a showroom, you don't see more than five cars.
Well, but it's, but the development review committee. It's when the staff. Or whatever it'll fit, on thirty acres of land, if you go under automobile dealer. This is not designed to be that.
It's a showroom, mm-hmm.
This is the showroom primarily indoors, that's the definition.
So I say five cars?
And then you put seventy-five cars outside.
They're, they're already allowed twenty, and no business can exist on twenty. Um, the, the number that we were proposing was, was sixty to seventy, which is not even overcrowding that particular, uh, location. It's been over there for a year now, there's been.
For the entire property?
Huh?
For the entire property?
For the entire pro- for the, the tire outside display, there's a hundred parking spaces or something like that. Um, remember, uh, they're not servicing vehi- they're not servicing vehicles there.
Not a bad number.
Yeah, they're not servicing the vehicles there.
All right.
Okay, so.
Kevin, go ahead, Mr. Held.
So, so we don't burden the property owners and require them to go to public hearing? We can have the development review committee review and approve it. So I have the number of vehicles of which shall be subject to the review and approval of the development review committee.
I, I like that language, I move to that language.
Okay.
That's fine, all right.
Can we?
We have a motion to adopt.
But can we put a, a number in now, though?
No, forget the numbers.
Let, let them review it and then from there, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Not gonna go with a number at this point.
All right.
So.
So we leave it up to the development review committee, Ms. Bulleye moves, do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, now, can we move on Article Seven?
I have a motion and already in place.
Yes. I second.
All right, motion made by Mike McDeermead to approve Article Seven as amended, seconded by Ms. Bulleye, all in favor?
Aye.
When is our next planning commission meeting?
You're not finished yet, you're, you're not finished.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
You're not quite finished.
Uh, 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 yeah.
All right, let me, let me.
Hey, but the ca- council has.
Yeah, we want, we would recommend an overall recommendation to the city commission of all of the changes.
But they're not finished yet.
To adopt the LDRs as amended.
I have a motion to that.
Hold, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Hold, all right.
You still have to do the zoning map. You still have to do the zoning map.
I recommend you adopt it.
The zoning map, um.
And we don't let him stand.
It's pretty straightforward, the changes that were made. The comprehensive plan added, um, a new zoning category, Bay Shore Zone. It added some planned, uh, uh, some overlays, the planned corridor development overlay, the planned community urban design overlay district. Um, we changed, uh, everything that was PD to PD one, PD two, PD three, based upon the standards that were already in place, um, and the co- and, and reflecting the comp plan. And then, uh, the majority of the changes occurred in map inconsistencies. For example, if the future land use map had something zoned residential, and it was commercial zoning. We went in and sat down together, did a lot of analyses, and your zoning map has to comport with your future land use map. So we made those fixes throughout the map. We've identified the parcel changes, you should have a list of parcel, um, parcels i- as far in your package. Uh, but that is really what happened, is that you had major inconsistencies, where at one point, you changed a future land use designation, but didn't change the associated zoning map at the same time, or subsequent to that. So you had a lot of essentially non-conforming properties, because it didn't conform with your future land use map, and now you fix that.
If we wanna change, we wanna change this map, I, I, I looked at the zoning map here, and, uh, especially with the transportation overlay district, I, 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 it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Which, which overlay districts are?
Okay, with the transportation overlay.
Which tra- we don't have a transportation overlay.
With the, uh, with the tran- well.
The train, that's not been a.
Community redevelopment, eh, eh, see, we're getting the train station.
Which one? Right, we haven't created that yet.
Okay. All right.
Because you have to do a study in order to do that.
Well, this is, this is, let me, let me. I know it's getting late, let me just kinda get the cobwebs out of my head here.
Okay.
Okay, what I don't understand is like on Emerald Drive, where I live, the college can go a hundred and ten feet, but the people who have been paying taxes all of these years can only go fifty-five feet. Now, if the university, because it's an educational institution, they can go a hundred and ten feet, their demand for service, water, sewer, and sanitation, and so forth and so on, is gonna be a heck of a lot greater than individual apartments.